There we go. All right, now are we ready? I don't mean that to sound in a bad way, just not, we're ready now? Excellent. My tone sometimes loses me. All right, so I'll call the meeting at order. It's very loud. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the, what is this? The September 12th Meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals, a volunteer advisory board appointed by the City Commission. Would staff please conduct the roll call?
Vandenberg?
Here.
Wark?
Here.
Holder?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
McReynolds?
Here.
Excellent. So, for each of the public hearings tonight, public comments will be accepted during the times indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members may call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period where they will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting live, they are not able to leave a recorded message. So, we have the agenda, is there, are there any announcements or changes to it?
There are no changes to the agenda for tonight.
Excellent. First then is acceptance, acceptance of last month's minutes, which is actually two months ago's minutes, because we didn't have a meeting last month. Are there any changes that need to be made? Hearing none, anybody want to move to approve?
Approve.
I second.
Thank you, any discussion needed? Nope. All those in favor of approving the minutes, or acceptance of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. There we go, unanimously approved. All right, so here's the meeting procedure, and don't worry occasionally, I get it wrong too after explaining it to everybody, but Charlie says we can be a little loose sometimes as needed. So, in general, for each request, the secretary will read the application into the public record, the applicant or representative will then have twen, excuse me, 10 minutes to provide their comments. I know 10 minutes sounds like a lot of time, it's really not. Feel free to use the time, just remember when it runs out, you're done. The applicant or representative, please sign in, provide your name and address at the podium before speaking. Following that, public will be invited to comment. Probably not going to apply tonight, but if they were here, they would come to the podium, sign in and clearly state their name and address, and present their comments within the three-minute time limit provided. Those in favor of the request are invited to speak first, those opposed second, and then we will have any call-in comments from the number that I talked about earlier. Then, we will close the public hearing portion, and the board will then conduct what is called a finding of fact. This is where we state what we feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact before they can proceed. So, the first vote you hear is not a ruling on the request, but on accepting the finding of fact. Then, we turn to discussing the request to determine a ruling. During this period, the board reserves the right to ask questions of persons who have already spoken, even after the public comment portion is closed, that happens quite frequently. We also ask Pete lots of questions, and sometimes Charlie. Once that discussion has ended and that whole thing has worked out, the board will then move on to a roll call vote of approving or denying the applicant's request. Be aware that a full board consists of six members, I think tonight we're short one, which is fine, but you do need four of us to vote yes to grant a non-use variance or a use variance. I think that's all clear. Will the secretary then read the first application into the record?
Sure. Excuse me. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance have been filed with the zoning Board of Appeals by RPM Pizza, ZBA number 24-04-13, at 4129 Portage Street. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance from Chapter 50, 50-4, 5D, 3A, to authorize a drive-through window to be located in the corner side yard along Dorchester Street Avenue. Where drive-throughs are to be located in the side and rear yard areas in Ce, in the Ce, excuse me, the CC2 district. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
That's usually the line I step on.
You did great.
Excellent. I did great by not saying a word. Would the applicant or the representative please step up to the podium, sign in, introduce
Hi, board members, my name is Anthony Hargrave, I am a Director of Operations for RPM Pizza. Sorry, I'm speaking too close. I'm here for the Portage location, Portage Street location for our Domino's Pizza store. New to this. As far as what I, we're looking for, we do have pickup windows that create a very friendly environment for our customers and you guys as citizens here in Kalamazoo. We find it very beneficial to have the pickup window, not drive-through, we consider drive-through, we actually have a point of sales, and we're not going to have any systems or a point of sales at the window for that. What it does do is for families like myself, and probably a lot of you guys, soccer, things of that nature, when you need to just place an order and actually come home and pick up a quick meal for the family, get the kids in bed, it provides a quick substitute for them to come in through the window, pick it up, 3 to 5, just about, less than a minute to two-minute transaction, mainly because it's prepaid already. There's no point of sale, so they wouldn't actually place an order at the window, they would then go ahead, if someone did come through or was confused, we would just direct them to go ahead to their form and actually place an order and come back around. We're looking at probably about 100 orders at that store a day, and of course, not all of them will be actual pickup window orders, but if, if half of them were, we're open for about 15 hours, and so we're looking at probably three on average pickups per hour. Obviously, dinner is going to be a little bit busier. But again, it's steady-moving traffic, we find that it helps because we do have what's called car side, but we find that pretty confusing, and also, we only have limited spots in front of the store, so, you know, you've probably gone somewhere and I checked in my app and I had to park way over here, and so now the occupants of the store is trying to look for them and, you know, getting the customer frustrated. So, the major thing again here is just that it's a quick pickup for the customer, really convenient, really quick-moving, no really standstill traffic, and we just think it'll be really good for the community here.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrave.
Thank you.
Excellent. If there's nothing else, you can just have a seat for a few minutes, I'm sure we'll call you back up and have some questions, thank you. Pete, does the staff want to make any comments?
Sure, staff can make the comments right now. So, you know, we try to provide a good lay of the land with the staff report and the photographs of the site. You know, this, this is a project that was actually brought up last fall, and another representative that was with RPM Pizza at the time, Julie Schaefer, brought this project to one of our project review meetings, because there was, we had concerns that the traffic engineer was not going to be in favor of, of this configuration because of the, you know, the, the tight space in between the two ingress and egress drives for the property. And, so the traffic engineer was comfortable with the limited use of this window, but there really is only stacking for three vehicles, which is the minimum required by the ordinance, so as, if there ever was a situation where there was a fourth vehicle, that vehicle would be blocking the, the entrance drive off of Dorchester. So, you know, so that was, you know, one of our, our concerns. We looked closely at, you know, other possible conforming alternatives for the site, really there's access doors along the back of the building to the four tenant spaces, so it really doesn't leave any space on the rear of the building, and then of course, the north side of the building, which is a side yard, already has a drive-through, and there really are not many properties, commercial properties in the city that have more than one drive-through on them, if you think about the typical layout of, of, you know, the smaller commercial strip malls. They're just, they're not conducive to having a lot of drive-through lanes without being in conflict with, with the parking. So, you know, so, so really boiled down to, you know, where is the ordinance at on this? You know, what, what have we had in place for years, and that is that, you know, drive-throughs are not in the front yard. They're not in the, the main front yard, or the corner side yard, as we now call, the secondary frontage along Dorchester Avenue. So, the ordinance does not support this. There's concern about the limited stacking space, and there is, you know, not a whole lot of room to even create any screen for a drive-through lane from Dorchester Avenue, which is a local street. And then, lastly, I want to mention that, you know, we talked through like, future users of this space, is it even feasible for the city to try to, you know, for the ZBA to place any conditions, that the city could keep track of over the years, that this pickup window is not used as an ordering window slash pickup window, and that's just not something that's enforceable. So, you know, so it just, you know, the, you know, so after the, the full evaluation, and then looking at the review criteria more closely as far as, you know, is there any special circumstances associated with the property? You know, there really isn't special circumstances a staff could point to that really lean to, you know, why we should allow a drive-through in the front yard. So, with that being said, I'm, I'm available for any, any questions the board has. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing, invite those in fav, and invite those in favor of the request to speak. I didn't figure we'd have any. Anybody opposed wish to speak? Again, didn't think we'd have any. Pete is checking on call-in comments.
Okay, we're opening it up to call-in comments right now. And we do not have any call-in comments for this case.
Okay, do we need to have any discussion before we move on to the finding of fact? I mean, I'm going to ask questions at some point of everybody, I'm sure, but if we do it now, we can do it in the finding of fact, the approval portion as opposed to the finding of fact. Great. So, who's doing the finding of fact then?
I'm doing finding of fact. Finding of facts for this Domino's Pizza location, we didn't have any call-ins, we didn't have anybody for or against it and present. None, no one on the staff could point to anything special circumstance here, so, you know, everything looks as-is, and that's it for finding of facts. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody want to second that motion?
Second it.
Thank you, that was scary. Then, we can just take a vote, right? We don't need a roll call. All those in favor of the specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Excellent. So, the motion on the finding of fact carries. Now, we need a motion, I suppose we can, no, we need the motion to approve the finding of fact, and the second, and then we do the discussion. Charlie will correct me if I'm wrong.
I make a motion to approve the finding of fact.
Any second?
I second that.
Thank you, now we can discuss. All right.
Mr. Chair, just for a point of order here, so, Board Member McReynolds read it into record, it was seconded by Mr. Wark, so we already had...
So, you need either me or Reddick to second it.
We already had it read in and seconded, we voted on it, so we're, we're, we actually finalized the finding of fact step.
Right.
So, this is now...
Right, no, and she moved to approve the request, and he seconded it, so now we can discuss the request.
I thought I heard finding of fact.
Did you say finding of fact? I think she meant the...
You meant, you meant the motion to approve the request.
There you go.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I wasn't listening as closely as you were, because I just assumed what she meant, but I appreciate you making sure we're good. Charlie's the one that will have to litigate it if we're wrong.
You can proceed.
Thank you. All right, so now we can discuss. Anybody other than me wish to start? All right, I'll start. So, is this, Pete, is the issue really on this property, I mean, there's a variety of issues, I suppose, if it did not have a, on this strip mall, the Taco Bob's has a drive-through, and I presume that's because there's not a street on that side of the building, they can have one. So, if there were no street on this side of the building, they could just have this, right?
Yeah, this, if this was an interior lot and not a corner lot, so it actually had two side yards, then, then yes, this would allow for a secondary drive-through, but the point I was trying to make is, we have not allowed drive-throughs in the front yard. It's not just part of the new ordinance, it's been that way for many years.
No, no, I, I think, I hope I understood that, that, that if that street weren't there, then this becomes a side yard, not a front yard.
Correct.
Okay. That answers that question, which I knew was the answer to the question, but I thought I'd ask it anyway. I had other notes here. So, having heard that, I, across Dorchester is the strip mall area that encloses like one well.
Yeah.
And on one end is like an engineering firm or something, whatever it is, I don't know.
It's a...
And on the...
Uncle Ed's.
No, they're in front, but there's one well, there's a, used to be a resale shop, and now it's something else, and there's a beauty parlor, that sort of thing. And, I'm certain they have a drive-through window there from an old business that used to be there, and I'm not sure if you have anything you can say about that particular one. This being, when, when you say that they don't allow them on front yards, this one seems to technically have one on a front yard.
I, I am not able to picture that particular drive-up windows.
No, well, I want to get out like Google Earth and see if there's a street view.
Well, if I can bring it up in a timely manner, I will here, but...
So, that, that's my, I mean, it, that would be my curiosity is, because if, if we haven't, if we, if they haven't been approved, or they've been long disfavored in front yards, I'm curious how that one got there at some point. They're not using it as drive-through window anymore, but the building clearly came with And I don't remember the name of the business. I don't want to get locked on that for the moment, but I'll come back. Does anybody want to ask any other questions of anything? Maybe not Pete, because he's looking at the map.
I'm just going to see if I can find it while we're continuing to walk through the other questions.
I just don't understand, just because we haven't done it before, what, like, what the impediment is for us to do it now?
The intent, I'm sorry, what, what the...
I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, why that's always the rationale, we've never done that before, so we can't do it now. Like, I'm trying to understand if there's something beyond that as the rationale that we should take into consideration, because that's not sufficient for me.
Okay, so the rationale is that, you know, we have landscaping standards to screen the parking areas that are between the building and the public street, and we have, you know, standards in place for, well, in, in many districts now, for, you know, the, you know, the amount of windows on the front of a building, but the drive-through lanes have, have always been in the side and the rear yards, so that you're not seeing a row of cars stacked up in front of a building. You know, that's, you know, that's not aesthetically, you know, what most people want to look at, plus in some cases, it blocks the view of the building. You know, one case in point is the Chick-fil-A that's in the city of Portage off of Southwestnige, where the drive-through lanes wrap around the building, and so you're, you see, you can see the building, but you're looking through the row of cars, so it's, you know, it's not, you know, that's, that's the reason most ordinances don't permit drive-throughs in the front yard.
So, you're trying to tell me because it don't look cute, this man's business is about to be put in a situation because it don't look cute?
Well, I, I think...
And this man trying to bring a business, I don't, that's...
I, I'm only going to jump to Pete's defense in this way, I'm not, because you're maybe assuming facts that were not in evidence about this particular case.
Okay.
He said it would make their job easier for sure, he wasn't like, we're on the verge of bankruptcy or anything.
Well, I'm just, but, no, but, but Chair, what I'm saying is that, the, the laws or the ordinances are to, like, be supportive, no, it's, I'm not talking about it being the rigidity of it, I'm simply submitting that this is supposed to be where there is an impediment or something that's prohibitive of this business, then we are supposed to take into consideration how to accommodate the constituency, not the aesthetics necessarily, I think those things should be taken into consideration, but that, for me, does not trump the functionality of his business.
Well, my concern, and I understand where you're, you're coming from, Remy, my concern with that is that not all the constituents want that, or do they want to live in an area like that? When the, the property owner purchased that lot, they knew what they were in for. So, I mean, it's, it's great to accommodate people and businesses and to be pro-business, but at what cost? And once we allow these variances, then we have an obligation to, you know, what, what type, my concern is what type of precedent does that send? Once we allow that, then we have to do it for everybody.
I'm okay with that, though.
Okay, I mean, ultimately, I think a lot of that issue comes down to, you have to draw a line somewhere, it's just where is that line going to be drawn?
Okay.
I think, yeah, and I think it should be taken into account that this particular property already has a drive-through. It's not like there's one business on this commercial parcel, and they have no ability to add a drive-through. There's four tenants on this property, this building's been around since, what is it? Since the late eighties?
Eighty-seven, I think it was.
And has been quite viable, you know, with just the one drive-through, so, you know, if this is, you know, if this layout doesn't work for this particular tenant, there's, you know, there's other locations around the city too.
Yeah.
So, there's that, there's, you know, the, the, you know, customer pickup parking spaces that were mentioned, so there are alternatives too to having a pickup window, it's just, the city of Kalamazoo has drive-through standards, we don't have separate standards for a quote pickup window, so if this is approved, it's, it could function just like a traditional drive-through, and could be problematic with this, with the limited stacking spaces. So, that's, I guess... I guess that's the other thing to keep in mind.
So, excuse me. The fact that, you know, you brought up Chick-fil-A. Excuse me. I've been out there with my kids. And trying to get into the store with all the traffic backed up for the drive-through, you're fighting traffic constantly trying to get in and out. So, that... The safety aspect is kind of concerning for me.
And the parking lot in this specific property feels really small to me whenever I've been in there.
It's tight. Yeah, it's very tight.
I was thinking about this because of the... In terms of the Panda Express that we talked about, was that two months ago at this?
Yes.
Or was it three? And the reason... And this is a perfect example, I think, for me of why I was against it then is, if we allowed them basically to move the entire building around the lot to accommodate their desires, they didn't have to, like, have the building in a certain location or in a certain orientation or to function. They just preferred it to be something else. And we... I voted against it. We wound up allowing that. And I started thinking, well, if we allow that, why don't we just allow this guy to have a drive-through? Or this company to have a drive-through? And this is what I talk... This is what, obviously, where we're getting at with the... Eventually, you set a precedent you can't really back away from. And if you do back away from it, then Mr. Anderson is in court defending the decision that may not be defensible. So, that's some of the greater worry I have about most of these things. Pete did manage to find... And I found it, too. The property in question. I don't know if you have anything you can talk about. Not this particular, the one across the street, because it def... What was the name of that again? Just so the record reflects. It's currently Birch Salon &amp; Co. And it does have a drive-through window there, but obviously, the salon company is not doing drive-through hairdos or something. I'm not sure how that got approved or not, or when, but they do have a drive-through one that fronts on the same street.
Yep. And that would... And because it has been taken out of service, if a new business came in and wanted to reactivate that drive-through window, it would not be permitted.
Okay.
So, they were grandfathered in?
Yeah. It was grandfathered in, but now that it hasn't been used, you know, that functionality is lost as far as being a grandfathered condition. Because there's... The image shows, just for the viewing audience, the image shows a building across the street, and it has parallel parking spaces down the side of the building, even though you can still see where there was a drive-through window.
Yeah. Like, it used to be for a bank or something? Okay.
I'm for convenience. And I think that this is a very cool way to reuse our buildings. Like, I don't think that we're really taking into consideration, like, the futuristic, like, positioning that we're, like, prohibit... We're being prohibitive of those types of uses. Like, this feels like the next iteration in what is necessary to sustain business. And he has innovated a way to be able to accommodate having another business in Kalamazoo. And this is like, oh, well, yeah, he could find another building for this purpose. It's like, what? Like, it just doesn't work like that. I am for this. I think it's, like I said, I think it's a very innovative, new way to go into a next iteration of what the business needs are to accommodate people. We didn't get one single phone call that was in opposition for this happening. So, I just don't understand why we're leaning really heavily in on a precedent being set for someone coming in wanting to try to find a new way to make their business sustainable in this community. I just... I struggle with that. And I think you guys always are... This is a brilliant board. You guys always make really smart, you know, comments. And I'm grateful to be on this board with you guys. I just... I would like to see us consider, you know, this perspective as well.
Those are all valid points that...
Yeah.
And what... I always feel like I'm speaking in opposition to you, but I actually feel like you and I agree on most of these things.
Yes.
Wouldn't... I would not... I wouldn't necessarily take the lack of opposition in the room or on the comments to mean there's support out there. Might just mean there's apathy.
That's true.
As for the particulars of the dominance, they've been there for years. They're... I mean, they've literally been there for several years. So, I'm not worried about, like, their long-term success, truly. The one question I forgot to ask of Pete, though, was, so, the current... And it's mentioned in the report. The current zoning is meant to sort of encourage people to come in off the Main Street, Portage, but also to be walkable down the... I'm going to call it a side street, but it's not really, in this instance, a side street. Dorchester. Is that new to the current zoning? Or has that been the way or the goal of it in past iterations of the zoning laws?
So, the terminology is different now, where we have the front property line, and then we have what's called the corner-side property line. Where before, we would just say, well, it's a corner lot. It has two front yards. And that seemed to lead to a lot of ambiguity, because it never... It didn't really provide any defining, you know, frontage for the property or the business. So, now, we, you know, based on what the primary... What's the primary roadway, which in this case is Portage Street, that is the primary frontage. The secondary or corner-side property line is Dorchester Avenue. So, that's speaking to that first part. And the second part about the walkability and so forth, you know, that has always been there. I think the point that was being made in the staff report was really that Dorchester is a local street. And once you go back to commercial properties, it transitions to residential. So, folks that live on that street have to drive past this commercial... These commercial developments to get to where it transitions to residential. So, you know, hence, you know, it's not... This, you know, Dorchester Avenue is not an intensive commercial corridor. And placing, you know... And it's just another reason why placing this drive-through in the front yard, you know, is putting it in a very visible spot on this property.
You spoke earlier about the traffic engineer. Did they ever look at... I don't know what they do necessarily. But when they're... You said they were okay with this being a drive-through lane effectively. It wasn't great, but they were kind of fine with it. Do they, in coming to that, like, make any kind of projections on, will this increase traffic through there? Or are they just, like, looking at the just general pattern of three cars can get through there fine?
It was more just looking at the general pattern and making sure that it wasn't going to create vehicle conflicts in the public street. And they felt, well, there's three stacking spaces. Technically, you could squeeze a fourth one on, but then it's going to block the driveway. So, they felt it's not going to... It doesn't appear that it's going to be a problem within the public street. And that's when the traffic engineer would weigh in and, you know, and say no to, you know, the design of the traffic flow on private property. If they felt somehow that was going to impact what goes on in the public street, and that was looked at very closely with the Chick-fil-A that went in at Drake and West Main to make sure that, you know, the drive-through lanes, you know, didn't conflict with, you know, because both, you know, because the drive-through lane and that stretch of Drake, you know, they had to work to make sure there wasn't going to be a conflict at that location.
So, they don't know or didn't say one way or the other. This likely may change no amount of traffic through this property. It's only really going to change, if anything, whether they're in a parking spot or just sitting parked next to the building waiting for somebody to hand them their... Like, literally, it should, like, the...
Right here?
It would be like right here.
That's what I... Yeah.
Like, this, I believe, is the back of the building.
That's Taco Bob's.
Yeah. This is the back. So, you've got to have some clearance to get around there. But it would go here, like, right here.
No, like that.
I'm... The zoning doesn't like it. I'm generally indifferent to it. The zoning doesn't like it.
Yeah.
And it really is just an issue, I think, then. What it... I guess, what my question about the thing... The last question was really just about, the ordinance wants a certain aesthetic, generally speaking. Yes, it wants some walkability, but generally, it also wants just a certain aesthetic. Does anybody have any other questions they want to ask of Pete? Or we can talk, you know, of each other, or the applicant?
Things change. Remember how you used to have them things where you could drive through and get, like, alcohol and stuff?
Yeah.
Remember them? Things change. We about... Stuff is changing. Let's open it. Open it. Change is good. Okay?
Well, yeah. I just, you know, the board should also take the criteria into account. And what is the special circumstance that's being leaned on here for...
Yes.
You know? And supporting the variance.
And that's where I'm going to come down with my stance and my, I guess, my closing remarks. I already said I really don't care personally if they wanted to put a window on that end of the building. I agree. It's probably going to be easier and safer and all of the things that Mr... I wrote your name down, so I wouldn't forget it.
Hargrave.
Hargrave. Thank you. I thought you said Hargrave, not Hargraves. Is it a plural or no?
No.
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry. I thought I heard.
For one for me. So, where was I going with that? Like, I don't care if there's a drive-through window on that end. However, as I said, with the Panda Express, that I... I did not vote for that because I just didn't want to vote for something to make life easier for the applicant when they could very well just comply with the ordinance and still get the job done. And most of my questions tonight, I think, are aimed at trying to find a way around the staff report, because I think the staff report is good and nails everything on the head. And I would adopt all of those thoughts, which means I can't really find any reason to get around the staff report. And that's why, regrettably, to some extent, I have to vote against approving the request for the reasons stated in the report.
Okay.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Power to the people. I will be voting in favor of this.
This isn't something that I can support. I also voted no on the Panda Express. I have a really hard time when a business could make something work. They are making it work. Their neighbors are making it work. But they want to do something different that the zoning does not support, that I strongly believe has a negative impact on the neighborhood with safety, walkability, the aesthetics, and, you know, the issues with the stacking of the vehicles. And, you know, I can't stress this enough. And I've brought it up on multiple occasions, and I'm going to continue to do so. The people that purchased their homes in that neighborhood that live one block back, yeah, no, I would be voting no.
Does anybody else need to make any other statements? Or can Pete just take the vote?
I think it's so interesting how we think in this community. Like, we will decriminalize people peeing outside, but we, like, about to stress this man out about having a window on his business. It's... I mean, that's interesting. We're interesting.
In fairness, those go through different processes to get to that end. To decriminalize it would have to go through, what, the city commission?
City Commission.
And pass an ordinance. If he wants to take it to the city commission to get them to change the zoning, he certainly can. And they can change it on us. And then, he gets to the same place. But it's... I think it's confusing, to some extent, the rules and the... How you get to those two different outcomes.
Okay.
Like, we're here to appeal denials of zoning or approve them that are variances. We don't ever see applications on peeing outside. I would love to see somebody ask for a use variance for peeing outside. Anyway, Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a couple of comments.
Yes.
I believe it's the board knows and...
Variance here, conditions of the property and so forth.
We aren't dealing with a criminal penalty here.
I know. I'm just...
Yeah.
Just to make that clear. I think, Remy, you know that.
Yes. Of course, I know that. You know what?
I'm not trying to contradict you.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I want to make that...
Yes, sir. Of course. Of course.
Not something that could put somebody in...
No, sir. No, sir.
And again, I feel like I argue against you all the time, but I also feel like you and I actually agree on most everything. I just feel I have to be contrary sometimes. Get the full picture.
I love that. I'm into it.
I do, too. I have a good time. I think we're just ready to take the roll call.
Yes.
Pete, you going to take the roll call?
Yeah. Just... We're just... Excuse me. We're just clarifying. So, I had Beth making the motion, Beth Vandenhomburg making the motion, and Tony McReynolds seconding the motion.
To approve the request?
To approve the request. Yes. There was... That was where we had a little confusion. We started talking about finding of fact.
Yes.
A second time.
We may have bled those two things across. Sorry, Shelby.
Yep. Our recording secretary is making sure to... We're on track. Okay. So...
Thank you.
This will be a roll call vote for the variance related to the drive-through window in the front yard.
Yes.
And we'll start with Vandenhomburg.
No.
Wark?
No.
Holder?
No.
Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
No.
I guess that means that the request is denied. Thank you for coming out, Mr. Hargrave. Sorry, I have to be the bad guys.
Comment bye.
But I do appreciate you being here. Thank you. Then, we will move on to item number two. Let me get my script back in front of me. Would the secretary then read the second applicant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chair. All righty. An application for variance for provisions that the zoning ordinance have been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by the YWCA of Kalamazoo. CBA number 29-09-14, 325 East Michigan Avenue. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance from Chapter 50, 50-8.5A to C to authorize a six-foot solid fence along... Excuse me. The North Pitcher Street and East Water Street frontage that exceeds the 75% opacity requirement for fencing along street frontages. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you. Does the... Would the applicant please step up to the podium, sign in, introduce yourself, give a... You don't have to provide necessarily your address when you speak. I believe there's a spot over there. Write it down. And then, explain the request again. I see more than one person coming up. You have 10 minutes. Divide it how you want, but it does run fast when multiple people start dipping into it.
Is your time...
No.
Well, Shelby hasn't started the clock yet.
Okay. Thank you for hearing our request today. My name is Susan Rosas. I'm CEO with YWCA Kalamazoo. YWCA is the only provider of emergency shelter for survivors in the city. We have operated out of this location since 1985, and survivors know this is where to run when they are fleeing violence. We have experienced extraordinary violence on our property. So, when survivors run to us, they have left a violent scenario.[1744.33] So when survivors run to us, they have left a violent scenario, and that time after fleeing is the time they are most vulnerable to homicide from their perpetrator. When they come to our building, we hide them. We protect them, and our building is secure internally. It would be really, really hard for an assailant to get into our building and to find the person they're pursuing. When they leave the building, when survivors leave the building, our parking lot is not secured. Anybody could drive through it right now. Anybody could see that a survivor's car is parked in our parking lot and know that the survivor and her children are in our facility. And it should be no surprise that we know these children, or that these families are being hunted at the time they come to our facility, that we have seen assaults in our parking lot three times this year. It is a common occurrence that people are harmed in our parking lot because of the nature of service we provide. We've requested this variance because we need to be able to hide survivors when they are fleeing their assailants. We need to be able to hide their children when these families are fleeing their assailants. We need the fence to go all the way around the parking lot because we need enough space to protect all of the survivors in our care and not just some. And we need the fence to be entirely opaque because we don't want passersby to be able to recognize if a survivor's vehicle is there in the building. There is always going to be risk for these families. That's the nature of being a survivor of violence, and we do all that we can to protect. But at least with this fence, we know that if a survivor is leaving our property, they're leaving in a car with a locked door, and their chances of survival are a whole lot greater than if they are attacked on their own in the parking lot. So what I am asking for this group is to consider this as the greatest special circumstance we could possibly have for protecting our community members here. And I have Greg with us, who is expert in the specifics of the variance itself, the way that we're proposing to construct the fence, and so I will pass the mic to you.
Good evening. I'm Greg Bennett. I'm Director of Facilities for the YWCA. To reiterate some points, YWCA was established in 1858, with YWCA Kalamazoo being founded in 1885. After our century of serving the Kalamazoo area, YWCA relocated its, to its present downtown location at 353 East Michigan in 1985. For nearly 40 years at this location, the YWCA Kalamazoo has continued to grow and serve our community, providing immediate shelter, transitional housing, educational crisis food, and basic necessities, 24/7 child care to those in need. As our community needs have grown, the YWCA programs have expanded to include initiatives such as Wish and Cradle. Unfortunately, society changes have brought increased challenges, including domestic violence, human trafficking, gun violence. The YWCA Kalamazoo is not immune to these threats of violence and actual acts of violence. In 2023 and 2024, YWCA Kalamazoo has experienced an increase in gun violence and threats to our property, clients, and employees, as well as vandalism to both our clients' and staff vehicles. To address these issues, the YWCA Kalamazoo has hired outside security consultant. The YWCA Kalamazoo is committed to the safety and well-being of its residents, employees, and children in its care. We are moving forward with significant safety and security upgrades to ensure the commitment, to ensure this commitment. As part of this commitment, the YWCA Kalamazoo is implementing many and of the recommendations from the security consultant, including the installation of a privacy fence. Given the rise in the mass shootings, gun violence, and our own threats and vandalism, we believe that this is imperative to include a privacy fence as part of the safety and security measures. Therefore, YWCA Kalamazoo is requesting the opaque variance to the downtown fencing ordinance to enhance the privacy and security of our property and to protect those that we serve. I stand by for questions.
I know Beth's gonna ask spelling in last names, so, we may come back to you later, but go ahead and get your, get their names now. I got Greg and I got
Greg, could you spell your last name for me, please?
B-E-N-N-E-T-T.
Bennett?
Yes.
Is it Roses?
Yep, R-O-S-A-S.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. You guys can go ahead and see. I'll have questions with you later. Pete, staff need to make any comments about the request?
Yes, staff does have a few comments to make, and I understand the gravity of the situation with the confidentiality, with the need to improve security, as well as, you know, that level of privacy. What we run into, though, is, you know, this is part of the downtown fabric. We have, you know, the ordinance has been massaged over many decades to, you know, to try to provide an inviting environment downtown that has, you know, that is welcoming to pedestrians as well as, you know, vehicular traffic. And, you know, part of that welcomeness and that, you know, having that comfort level downtown is being able to see what's around you. And when we start introducing, you know, fencing like this that is almost solid, that you can't really see through, you know, from almost every angle, you know, these create, you know, unknown spaces. Nobody knows what's on the other side of that fence anymore. They can't look across the parking lot. And, you know, and so, rather than having this open inviting feel, now we have this, you know, this enclosed corridor, this sidewalk that works its way down this, you know, six-foot solid fence, and then wraps around the corner. Now, you know, so, and in speaking about the ordinance, you know, what the ordinance now includes, it includes landscape buffers for parking lots. So, you know, we're, you know, we had tree and shrub plantings before, now we have decorative metal fencing that we've added to create, you know, kind of a more aesthetically pleasing feel, but also provide somewhat of a barrier to foot traffic cutting through properties with the decorative fencing. And, you know, with that, you know, that fencing is typically, you know, up to 42 inches in height, but with the downtown, you can go up to six feet with a see-through type fence. So, you know, are there, are there conforming options for security? Yes. You know, a taller fence could be constructed that's still a see-through type fence, you know, like a six-foot decorative metal fence. Can you still have gates? Yes, you could still have gated entrances into the parking lot. So you could control the traffic flow in and out of the parking lot. Now, the other part about the privacy and the confidentiality of folks being able to get in to your facility without being seen, you know, that is a little more complicated. You know, I think there's some avenues there to maybe fence off part of the parking lot or build, like, carports, for example, that could house a certain number of cars that would, you know, cars could drive in and turn into a carport and not be visible from the two public streets that your property fronts on, or at least the parking lot fronts on, which are Pitcher Street and Water Street. So, you know, I think there are some alternatives, but it's just that, you know, that is, you know, the, you know, this tall privacy fencing is just the wrong direction for the center of the downtown, and it doesn't send the type of open inviting message that we're trying to convey to the public about wanting people to feel comfortable downtown, day or night. You know, and lastly, I just wanna mention, we also have standards now for corners and, you know, for clear view on corners, as well as clear view for driveways. And questions were raised about, you know, what does this do for vehicles pulling out of the parking lot that are driving past this solid fence and across the sidewalk? You know, are they gonna be able to see pedestrians coming down the sidewalk? You know, that, you know, this type of fencing also raises, you know, questions there and could lead to vehicle pedestrian conflicts. So that's what I have for general comments, and I'm open to any questions from the board.
I'm sure we'll have some after we do the public hearing portion. So, no, go ahead and have a seat. I'll now invite anybody else who wants to step up and speak in favor since, excellent, there we go.
Do you need my address, or?
Can you say your name?
Say your name one more time. I think you, when you're done, you can sign in.
Okay.
Because you only have three minutes, that's why.
Okay. So you need, what do you need from me?
Just say your name.
Marnie Sawicki.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to speak on behalf, I am a survivor of domestic violence. I'm also someone who has a permanent restraining order from my husb, my ex-husband. He has a felony. I understand the aesthetics part of this. I'm also the former mayor of Cape Coral, Florida, so we had tons of aesthetics ordinances to try and prevent all kinds of things for our city to make it pleasing. But YWCA, I also volunteer there as a victim advocate, and they've been a fabric of this community for years. And just because it's not necessarily pretty does not negate the fact that we have a safety issue. And as a volunteer going there, I have been myself afraid at times to walk in there at night when I'm called to support a victim at about midnight or 2:00 in the morning. So I also would hope that you would overlook or at least take and consider the fact that the aesthetic part, yes, but there's also a lot more going downtown that you could be concerned with. So I'm just asking that you consider it. Thank you.
Make sure and sign in.
Thank you.
Were you also gonna step up? You can come on up.
I currently serve as Vice President of Operations at YWCA. I am also a survivor of domestic violence, and that is what brought me to YWCA. But I also wanna speak on the special circumstances. In the five years I've worked at YWCA, we have had not only an increase of violence and assaults due to our activities, but also the unhousing the area, walking through. We can watch security cameras and just see people walking through our parking lot, trying to open doors. I walked out at night, there were two other cars that were watching to see two of us women walking out. Once we safely got to our cars, then the blue car gentleman took off. And so I also oversee IT, which we look at the camera footage. We were meeting with police last week to talk about what we could do in case there was a mass attack, and one of the first questions they asked about our security upgrades is, are we looking at putting a fence in to protect? And the opaqueness is important for privacy. If we needed to do some type of, you know, to make sure that the opening when you're driving out is there, but you look at Pitcher Street and Water Street, the traffic that comes in, you've got customers from Beer Exchange that just come and use the parking lot, walk across the parking lot, people coming up and asking for money, food. So you look at the other things besides the work that we do there, how we continue to protect our program participants, the children, the families we serve, and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Anybody wish to step up and speak in opposition? Probably not, since you all came together. I will say, before we turn over to the comments, if there are any online, we did have two letters or emails come in in opposition to the request. I'm just stating that for the record, and I'm sure Beth will maybe discuss that when she does the finding effect. Pete, any calls?
And I'm opening up the line. I do not see any calls for this particular case. Nope, no calls.
Excellent. Then that closes the public hearing portion. I don't suppose we need to make any actual discussion before we move on to the finding effect. We can save it all for the
Are you gonna read the letters, or?
I can read the letters, if you want me to read the letters.
Isn't that protocol?
I don't think we've gotten any while it's been me as the chair. The first one is from Roger Parczuk, P-A-R-Z-Y-C-K. He, there are two letters. Maybe I should read the second one first, because the first one begins with, "I agree with the other one." The second one in our packet is from, where is the name on here? Nelson Nave. He basically stands against the ordinance for visibility reasons, that doesn't comply with the ordinance, it's not inviting, that sort of stuff. And then the other letter essentially just says, "I agree with the other, it looks bad, it's subject to graffiti, sends the wrong message to the community."
Okay.
Those were, and I'm maybe making them seem longer than they were, they were fairly short. All right. Did you wanna move, make a motion on the finding effect? Beth?
Okay, sure.
Can I just say, both letters are from business owners
Yes, they, yes, they are from, I think it was Heritage.
Yeah, Heritage Company.
Yes, and both have
Nelson's right next to you.
Okay.
It's an antiques dealer.
I see, okay. Excellent. Thank you for noting that, Gary.
I move that the finding effects for 325 West Michigan Avenue shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated August 28, 2024, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Twenty-four notices of public hearing were sent and two responses were received. Mr. Nelson Nave of Edward Street, a letter in opposition, along with Roger Parczuk, a letter in opposition as well. As our chair mentioned, their concerns were that the zoning codes out of alignment regarding fence opacity, line of vision, and landscaping. Susan Roses, CEO of the YWCA, spoke passionately about the need to keep the survivors and their families safe while fleeing their assailant, that it's a high-risk situation. They've had an increase with perpetrators coming down to the property, banging on the doors, then being aware of where their victims' cars are, being able to identify them. Mr. Greg Bennett, spoke, facilities manager, spoke more about the history of the YWCA, but supported what Ms. Rosa was saying. Staff understood the gravity of the situation, the need to keep the YWCA, the confidentiality of the identity of their clients, the fabric. It's a difficult balance to have that with the fabric of the downtown, wanting to have an inviting environment for the pedestrians, vehicle, traffic, also cited the zoning issues regarding, most importantly, the line of vision and keeping the folks and their cars safe. They also suggested that there were some other ways to go around keeping the clients, their families, safe, maybe a more decorative metal fence, maybe something that is 75% or less, or at least, excuse me, at least 75, no more than 75% opacity, carports, maybe doing some different things like that. Marty Sawicki spoke in favor of the variance. She's a domestic abuse survivor, and further reiterated, safety being critical versus the aesthetics, that, you know, there's continued concern about the escalation of violence just in our world in general. Allison, I didn't correct, I didn't get the first portion of your last name, but I caught Hoffman, is that correct? Okay, I, is also a survivor of domestic violence and an employee of the YWCA. I want to go back, that Marty Sawicki is a volunteer, so she's, she also is in the building and meeting clients in the middle of the night and things like that. Allison spoke to the fact that, you know, it's not just an increase in the violence from the perpetrators against their partners and their children, but that, the nature of the folks downtown, that they have people, they can see people from the bars, people from the homeless shelters wandering into the parking lot, going through cars and things like into the parking lot, going through cars and things like that. So it kind of seems like they have issues from multiple folks. There were no call-ins, and there was no one speaking and speaking here personally in opposition, just the two letters of opposition.
Excellently thorough as always. I appreciate it. Would somebody care to second that?
I second that motion.
Thank you. I don't know that we need any discussion on the finding effect itself, so perhaps we should just move on to the vote on that. All those in favor of adopting the specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, we all were in favor, but I don't need to ask opposition. All right. So the finding of fact is approved, or that finding of fact. So now we need a motion to approve the request. Somebody wish to make that motion?
I'll make that motion approval.
Thank you. Anybody want a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Now we can move on to discussing it. I'll just say ahead of this, before anybody really says anything else, I don't think conceptually that any of us up here are in favor or against increased security at this facility or for domestic violence survivors. And I do not want any of, anybody who may be listening anywhere ever to think that any of us in the discussion, that is not, that we don't want that. I want that. We all want that. It's how do we make that happen, provide the security and the, you know, safety that's needed. I want to say that if you were, obviously, these folks were here, but if you're here most of the time, you hear lots of us talk about precedent and setting, bad precedent that we wind up having to grant to other businesses. And that's always something that's in my head going forward. So I just say that essentially is sort of just place-setting or table-setting or whatever to kind of move the discussion forward. But I did want to ask Pete, because you did talk about some options that were available to them. Like, one, they could have this fence, not this particular fence, they could have a fence, it just needs to have some opacity to it. Is that, that's correct? They could put it in the same spot, same height, same everything. It just needs to have, be a little bit see-through.
Correct, correct. They can go up to six feet in the front yard areas, which would be both the North Pitcher Street and the Water Street frontage, as long as the opacity standard is met.
Is there any way that within the ordinance, without having a variance, maybe I'm answering my own question as I ask it, that they could have this type of fence somewhere on that property, like creating, say, an island of this fence, like set back from all of the roadways?
Yes. If it's outside of the front yard area, then you can use the solid fencing.
So where'd my map go of the property?
Now, that footprint is going to be the area, you know, closest to the building.
Do they need a variance for that? Or can they just go ahead and install that?
That would not need a variance. We want to make sure that it's clearly outside of the front yard.
Right. So if, so if I look at this photo here, and I'm sorry, it's in black and white, we're probably talking about this tree over, like, this area here. Like, this area here could be a solid fence.
Well, yeah.
I'll move it over so you can see it better.
I mean, yeah.
Because I presume this is their building.
Yeah, that's the building, so...
So then it would have to be sort of even with that and come back some off of this back street.
Yeah, so in general, it could be in the, yeah, the center part of the parking lot towards the west side property line.
And they could put up one here because it separates the properties.
Like a little courtyard?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I want to be in a position where I can vote yes on something here, so I don't play myself into a bad corner, but I also want to comply with the zoning. Okay, so they could, it's not ideal. That would leave, I don't, that looks like 30 parking spaces, but some of them are going to disappear if you did it this way, because you got to have like a gate somewhere in some of these spaces you can't really back out of.
Like this?
Yeah. So that's a possibility. And I'm throwing that out there because that may be a more viable alternative.
Yeah, and I will admit, Mr. Bennett and I did talk about that briefly, but there was, you know, questions of providing concealed parking for not only those they serve, but also their, their employees. So then that got into, you know, a large number of parking lot, or parking spaces, rather, would need to be concealed behind a fence or wall.
And I do want to remind everybody, at least just so we all remember, with the Boys and Girls Club, we did allow them some variances for security reasons, but that was not allowing fencing. That was reducing their number of doors, which is a little bit of a different thing, because the concern with the fencing is maybe safety on the roadway, more than it is necessarily safety in the building, I think, if I kind of get my head around those correctly. So what I'm saying is those two things are different. I'm not hemmed in by my vote on the Boys and Girls Club. Okay. I am like talking entirely too much probably on this particular point.
Mr. Eldridge, was there some discussion with you and the applicant about a vinyl fence?
Doesn't a vinyl fence just run into the same problem?
The opacity standard would still apply whether it's wood, metal, or vinyl.
Okay.
So in this case, what's being proposed is like a powder-coated aluminum, louvered fence. So it would have some airflow through the fence, but...
Okay.
But if it's made out of aluminum, it's probably structurally more sound than the vinyl fencing for security reasons, I would imagine.
All right. Thank you.
How tall is the fence over at the federal building? Because they, they obviously have security concerns there, and they have fencing on the, would be the north side.
They got armed guards and stuff, though. It's different.
But it also has a much higher amount of opacity to it.
Right. Yeah, that's a wrought iron fence. Wrought iron, yeah. I believe it is taller than six feet, and it's been there for... Forever. Yeah, longer than I've worked for the city, which is quite a while now.
Do you think the federal government needs to ask us about the heights of their fences?
I have a feeling that that was not brought to the city when they decided they were going to fence in that facility. But it's see-through, and...
It is see-through.
Yeah.
So I get the point Gary's making, is maybe a see-through fence provides the, maybe provides security that's needed. I understand why the applicant would say no, the secrecy is the important thing, and motivated abusers are going to be motivated to do whatever. Yeah.
I think we have an opportunity here to support women and children.
Oh, my lord. I'm not saying, oh, my lord.
Yes, you are.
Like, why'd you go there? No, it's gonna make it seem like my vote might not support women. Sorry.
Oh, I'm not, sorry. I'm not trying to make it, but I think that, I'm not saying that, that your vote is in opposition to women. I'm saying that this is an opportunity to support women. We're in a day and age where the Ugandan Olympian track runner was set on fire by her significant other, where the Miss Switzerland contestant was put in a blender by her husband. This is not no game. This is not nothing to play with. These people have told you what they need. They do this every single day. So to contend with that or to try to, they say what they need. Yes, the answer is yes.
I have a question, Charlie. Like, let's say we say no here tonight, or we may say yes, who knows. Could the city commission just grant them like an exemption from all of these ordinances? Or say that this particular property, as long as they are the particular tenant, do not have to comply with X, Y, or Z? Can they do that? It's maybe not a fit.
They could change the ordinance, I suppose, so that didn't, wasn't required.
But they can't make a special exemption just for them?
No, there wouldn't be an appeal to the city commission. It would be an appeal to circuit court if you deny.
I'm saying, no, that I understand. Like, they, from here, you go to court. But they could, I'm just saying, could they just end run around us and have the city commission just give them what they want without...
I think that would require a change in the ordinance.
But they can't...
The city commission couldn't appropriately, legally, just say, well, we're granting you an exemption from the ordinance.
They can't make a special circumstance for them because of who they are.
That's what this board is for, the special circumstance. That's why I was trying to say in the last case, like, this is why we do that, so we can create opportunities for people that have extenuating circumstances.
Special circumstance based on conditions of the property that allow us, you know, it's not necessarily who the individual is or what they do.
It's so that we apply it fairly to all.
That are the special circumstances that are appropriate for a variance.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what that means. What does that mean? What do you mean? Like, you're saying that this is property-specific and not mission-specific, then?
I think what he's getting at is that the standards are there so that we just treat everybody in a similar way, instead of like, well, our heartstrings are tugged by this one, so we approve it, as opposed to this one. We're all like, we're not approving it. It's so we treat everybody equally.
But why can't that be, we treat everybody equally, and we empathize, and we have compassion, and we think through how we want to let our, our ordinances, our values reflect in our ordinances, and how we choose to use our philosophical bid to interpret the ordinances and the laws that we put in place, because we're people first.
The counter then is that if, if we allow them, this is the precedent thing, if we allow them to get around the fence standards, then perhaps next week it's the property across, or next month, the property across the street wants it, and then it's the one across the way. And then you've got essentially Fortress Downtown with all the fences that we backed ourselves into a corner, having to approve because we approved the one, no matter how needed it is. I understand it is 100% needed. I don't want anybody to mistake that. I think it's a necessary thing, but I still have to divorce my feeling on that from our job, and that's why Charlie mentions this. You've got to work within the standards.
And for staff?
Please.
Okay. Would it be possible to have something written up that if we approve this, it's only for the tenant, the YWCA, as long as they're on the property? And if they move and somebody else wants it, they have to take it down? They have to take it down before they move?
That is complicated, because the way ordinances are structured, and Charlie will correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, these variances go with the land regardless of ownership. So if you grant this variance for the fence, and the YWCA moves out next year, you know, any future tenants or property owners now have privacy fencing all the way around their parking lot.
And then the YWCA comes back asking for a privacy fence at another property potentially?
And they gonna need it, because they, of the nature of the work they do to serve our community, and we gonna grant it.
The legal phrase is, it runs with the land, but that, yeah.
Right.
Continues. Now, in evaluating the standards to determine whether to grant or deny a variance, it also requires consideration, are there conforming alternatives? So that's something you got to decide. I'm not going to tell you, and I can't, whether there are or there aren't. Based on the evidence that's presented, are there conforming alternatives? Are there other ways to accomplish this in addition to meeting the requirements for a variance?
I don't want to step on Gary's statement.
No, I wasn't gonna say anything.
Okay. You took a breath like you were going to. Sorry. And I think that's where my question got to with the, is there someplace within the property they could, I'm not saying they couldn't have a second fence of the federal court variety bounding the whole of the property, but finding some conforming alternative to bounding in the whole property with essentially a wall.
They already, but don't you, what do you think about them telling you what they need, and they do this every day? And the facilities person that's there, probably trying to fend off somebody crazy outside, he trying to tell you what he need to do his job effectively? Why, let me, can I understand where we're coming from with that, because they say what they need to do this work in our community, and we all value it. We all are, like you said, I do believe that we all are in support of what we say that they're doing. I don't think that anybody on this board is in opposition to that, so...
Well, let's, let's look at the standards then, all right? Make sure I'm looking at the right one. I got my papers jumbled.
I was, I was kind of thinking on what y'all all were saying, and I kind of see that we want to protect these people, but I think there's a lot of other ways to do this properly without having a fence, you know, without having that kind of fence. I'm thinking that if we had security 24 hours and had security walk people out to their cars, outside of that, once they off their property, things can happen. Once they on the property, they're protecting them as they leave the property. But we can't, we don't know what's going to happen to them when they leave the property.
Yeah.
Because, you know, people can follow them and go wherever they want inside Camazoo, and we won't know nothing about it, because they off your property now. And, you know, so I'm thinking if we have top-notch security on property, you know, and have that presence, then that kind of things will be less of a situation, you know, as I see. And, you know, and I was thinking of the traffic, you know, we already have a lot of construction, and that area is terrible. And putting up a non-separable burial will cause even more accidents in the future, I would think, you know, in that situation. So that's kind of what I'm looking at, like, is there other ways we can do this without not granting what they need?
DHS had a lot of security on their property over on Stockbridge, which kind of deterred some of that.
And they also have a very see-through fence.
Yes, yeah.
The opaque fence, not opaque, not opaque fence.
I have a question for the applicant.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any one of them in particular?
Since you both spoke as a pair, if you could come up, Susan and Greg, that's fine. You know, I really want to find a way to get you what you need and what you're asking for, and so I would like to hear your thoughts on why we couldn't, why you couldn't have that fence...
Complying with the ordinance.
In the center of your parking lot. Because I, you know, I see what you're saying, what Mr. McReynolds' point is, but then on the other hand, you know, he's right, I agree with you, but then that doesn't, you know, the predator can drive by and see where the car is. So how would that work if you, if you didn't have it on that, around the building?
Are you talking about having a section in the center?
Yeah.
All right. A couple problems. We already don't have enough parking places for all our employees and our clients. We just lost about 10 parking places alongside that road where the new bike path went in, so that kind of eliminated that. So then you put in a fence that's going to take up bricks and all that. You're taking, going to take up about 20 more parking places. And again, unfortunately, our organization is growing because of the work we do, so we're adding staff to it. So again, the need for parking is growing exponentially as well. So to take up parking places that are already in need to put it in the center, it doesn't really help us. If I may, I'll point out, the fence would be going right where the current one is. So brush and scrubbery that is there can still be there, so it won't be such an eyesore. You can have the greenery still along there. This is just an option of a closed fence, if you, of more... This is just an option of a closed fence, if there, a more decorative one is on the table.
We'll paint it, we'll do, we'll do whatever we need to do.
And, and we don't want graffiti on, on there anyway, so that's, again, we wanted a, a nice-looking fence, that's why we went with an aluminum powder coat that will look nice in the, for downtown, easily maintained, if it's tagged, easily to, to paint over, so we went through just about every scenario to do this. And, again, back to your point of security, we are in the process of hiring a security, a security manager, and beefing up our security and going through security drills, so this is just one aspect of a big program in security measures that were taken on as an organization to protect our employees and our clients.
Okay.
I, I think it's important for folks to know what prompted us to be so urgent in our request, we've been around since 1985. We have had many, many folks harmed in our parking lot all this time, and we haven't requested a variance before. We had a risk for an active shooter threat not long ago, and it became apparent after the delay in law enforcement response, that we were on our own for a while, and that, that's not okay for us, is that okay for the kids in our building, is that okay for the survivors we serve? And there is, when we're, when we're talking about the, the safety and value and aesthetic and purpose of our community, obviously, we want everything to look great, and we want people to feel welcome, but I'm telling you today on the record that it is not a matter of whether, it's a matter of when someone loses their life in our parking lot.
Jesus.
So I, I, I need to make sure people understand that this, the significance of this request.
Father God.
And if I could make one more point about the security? That perpetrator that had the active threat came on property while the police were on our property, waiting for him, and vandalized the clients. So it doesn't matter how much security you have on the property, when they're wanting to do it, they're going to do it. So we had police on the property when that happened.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I did want to bring us back, because we started to talk about it, your questions were great, though, I don't mean that to sound like they weren't. To the standards that we have to apply, that Charlie keeps trying to remind us of, he's doing his job, reminding us of our job, too, that these seem to speak to things that, is there something with the particular piece of property that prevents their usage of it in the way that others would be able to use it? I think if you go through all these standards, it's not about the particular business or organization, it is about the piece of property itself. And lots of times, we hear about non-conforming lots, or, you know, they're triangular, or they're extremely skinny and very long, and we have to deal with that. This isn't really that, this is, this is more of a problem, I hate using that word in this instance, it's more of a, there's no good way of saying it, it's a problem that comes with this particular organization and is not the result of the land. It's a challenge with a particular organization, problem makes it sound bad, any word I use is going to make it sound bad. And that, I think, is...
It's a byproduct of...
Yes. It's not of the land, it's, it's the, the organization, which, which, again, I believe is doing a great thing, and I encourage it, and I want them to continue, and I fully support it, and ultimately, I got to vote no.
I just feel like we've been worried about the wrong stuff, we, we worried about the wrong stuff, we apply, oh, the rigidity that you were referring to earlier, Tony, to the, to, to things that, we're liberal about things that are, that are just, what's the word I'm trying to say?
Superfluous?
Say it again.
Superfluous?
Superfluous, and you know what I'm trying to say? And then, like, really hardcore and rigid on stuff that, like, we need to be more lenient and more liberal about, and it's just... I, I'm sad about that, sad because of the implications that it has for our community and for people that do the work that they're doing, and the critical thought that they've put in to how to be the best at what they're doing and providing a service to our community. I wish I could have said that more eloquently earlier, but dang, I think y'all hear what I'm trying to say, like, it's unfortunate, and I wish we could figure that out, I'm voting yes.
No, I, I think you're saying it well, I just, I respectfully have to disagree with the ultimate vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to clarify some things here. And I, I don't want to be misconstrued what I'm trying to do here.
Yeah.
Having a refuge from domestic violence and a secure refuge is not only important, it's a necessity in, in our society, and I am not personally opposed to that.
Which is why I said at the beginning, I think as a concept, we all agree with the goal here.
I want to make that clear.
I would not ask anybody ahead of time, because it's just common sense, we all would agree with this outcome.
Yes, this is, as I've said many times, a quasi-judicial body with limited authority, and there are specific standards that this board has to meet, variance, and not be overruled at some time down the road, and as you have been saying, Mr. Chairman, you have to be careful that you don't set a precedent that is effectively going to change the ordinance, it's really changing the ordinance is the role of the commission. So what I have tried to do here is just remind you the scope of your review.
Yes.
And what standards you meet, because that's part of my job, to see that your decisions, when they are made, are made properly and can be upheld.
Now, we should just do them on fives and let you fight it out in court, Charlie.
Well, um, this is a really, really tough one, for me in many aspects, and, and in others, it seems like an easy yes. I really try to keep everything as fair, as fair as I can, and the, the whole precedent issue, I get that, but every once in a while, I just do what I, what I, what I think is right, regardless of, and I have a real problem with what's happening downtown. There, I mean, there are a lot of really, really good things happening downtown, and I'm proud to live in Kalamazoo, and, and that's all good, but the statistics with, the, the civil issues with, you know, people going to the bathroom and, and the panhandlers, in addition to the violence, and I just don't think it's fair that the families seeking your services, people can look in there and see their cars, and I just don't see any other, I, I'm going to vote yes.
I, I'm not taking issue with any, with your vote, I just wanted to, to say that the issue of people public urinating downtown?
Right.
The unhoused?
Right.
All of those things, that is a problem for every property downtown, I don't want us to base our decision for these people based on that, because then we truly, truly are setting a precedent for everybody to have a, this kind of, assuming we approve this.
Sure.
For everybody to have this kind of fencing and come to us with a, well, you allowed it for homeless or public urination for them, so we should also have it too. I'm just saying that for the record, that is not what, what, what we're doing, it's just an added side effect.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I, I guess I emotionally threw that in there to, to lead to where we're going down there with some things, but you're absolutely right, that we...
Look, even though we are going to vote on different sides of this, I do appreciate everything you both have said.
Thank you, and I think you're for women, I do think that.
I am for women.
I know you are, I believe that for a...
I'm married to one, my mom is one.
I believe that.
Gary, do you want to add anything?
No.
Tony?
I'm ready for a vote.
Okay.
Gary says we're ready for the vote.
Let's get it done, get it done.
Pete, let's take, let's take the vote.
Any more questions for staff?
No, sir, I don't have any.
No.
No, thank you.
Okay, and I, I am going to, I'm not going to start with Beth again, because I did last, for the last vote, so we're going to start with Mr. Work for the vote on this.
No.
Holer?
As I said, sadly, I'm a no.
Harrington?
Yes, of course.
McReynolds?
No.
Brandon Homburg?
Yes.
Uh, so that's three to two against, and you needed four in favor to Carrie, which means the, where is the wording in my script? The, the request is denied, is what the ultimate outcome is. Again, I would love to grant something that is much more conforming. I can't even make eye contact, because at the same time, while I think it's the right vote, I do feel bad having to vote that way.
I feel terrible, too.
I understand, Joe.
I don't think we have any other business or other action items, we don't have any reports, I believe that takes us to adjournment, I remember not needing to have a second for that, we are adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for those who have stayed till 8:40, Shelby included.
It's time to go home.
Enjoy writing the meetings. Enjoy typing up the meetings, we, we spoke in turn, as always.